Jason, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. I want to. I'm sorry for the delay. If we can get this out public hearing of February 7th, 6:37 official time, if we get approval agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
All favorited.
I.
Mr. Resner, I'd love to hand this off to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my name is Jason Resner. I'm the county administrator. And I'm going to go through a short presentation about House Bill 581, the things that were included there, talk a little bit about floating homestead exemptions, about the impact of our current valuations, and then the opting out process that you've probably all heard about. So House Bill 581 came about in the 2024 legislative session. There were some legislators that were concerned about rising assessments and rising property taxes going along with that. The Senate wanted to control that increase in assessments. And some House members were looking to expand sales tax options. All of that kind of came together really at the last minute in House Bill 581. It was passed on the last night of the legislative session. There was an accompanying resolution, H.R. 1022, that went along with that. And both of them passed their own at last night. So HP 581 said it had to go to the voters in November 2024, and it did. It was passed by the voters then. The effective date of the bill was January 1st of this year, so it is currently in effect. One thing I wanted to mention quickly is that none of our existing exemptions are affected by HP 581. So nothing that you have now, nothing that is called for in state law and local legislation that's been passed previously will be impacted by this. So zero impact on existing exemptions. There were, excuse me, three major components to this bill. One is a statewide floating homestead exemption, and that's what you've heard about. The second element there was a new local option sales tax called a FOST. And the third thing that the bill addressed was it made some changes in the way that property taxes are collected and the way notices go out and that type of thing. So we're going to talk a little bit about all three of these. The first major component was that statewide floating homestead exemption. And so a floating homestead exemption, all homestead exemptions, but are designed to offset increases in the taxable value of a property. With a floating exemption, the exemption amount floats or adjusts from year to year. So it's not a set exemption amount. So we have, now we have, there's a $15,000 exemption from school taxes. And that's a set amount. A floating exemption, that amount varies from year to year. And so an example of how that would work is if you had a property with a taxable value of $100,000, the next year, the value goes up by 10,000, 110,000. With a floating exemption, with a basic floating exemption, you would pay based on that original $100,000 value. So your exemption amount would be $10,000 in that first year. The next year, if your property value went up to 125, you still pay based on that original $100,000 value, and your exemption floats to 25,000. So it's not a fixed amount each year. So that's kind of a basic floating exemption. What's that?
How many years is it key plugging?
So it could float in perpetuity. But that's just kind of how a floating exemption works in general. So the one that was called for by House Bill 581 has an adjustment for inflation. So it's a little bit different twist to that. So if you started out with the same property, $100,000 value, and the rate of inflation is, say, 2%, a year later, your property is worth 110,000. Rather than going all the way back to the original value, all the way back to the 100,000, you add that 2% rate of inflation there. So your value is at 102. And so instead of a $10,000 exemption there, you would have an $8,000 exemption.
Is that off the current, like, of the value of the house? Like you say, $100,000. That ain't paying every property $100,000.
No, no.
Maybe 250 they're paying.
That's right. That's right. Yeah. I was just using sort of round numbers there. That's all right. So a few more things about 581. Again, no impact on our existing homestead exemptions. The base year would be the 2024 assessed value. The value would reset when a home sells or when there's a substantial property change. The exemption is, it can't be transferred to another property. So you can't work it up to a $40,000 exemption and then place that on another piece of property you own. It's specific to that one. And then the bill did contain a provision that allowed each jurisdiction the opportunity to opt out. And so there's a two-month window there. And each jurisdiction makes that decision on their own. So the Board of Commissioners gets to make that decision. The city council gets to make that decision for city. School board gets to make it for school board. And it's that way all over the state.
You said the lines of the jurisdictions. You're talking about the jurisdictions of the people.
County.
Right. The city limits and then unincorporated counties. So the Board of Commissioners will be making the decision for unincorporated county. Everything outside the city limits. All right. So the opt-out process involves these steps. You've got three public hearings. So you're at the third of the three public hearings. They've got to get advertised in the newspaper and on the website at least a week before the hearing. And then the county commission has to pass a resolution formally opting out after that's been done, after those hearings are complete. And then all that documentation has to be sent to the Secretary of State by March 1st. After March 1st, the ability to opt out is gone.
So the ones that don't opt out, that do opt out, are still statewide?
Yes. It applies for, yeah. So you'll have, you know, hundreds of different jurisdictions kind of making that decision for their local area. And so, you know, some will stay in, some will opt out. The Board of Commissioners has voted to start the opt-out process. And the hearing dates, we had the one that was canceled due to weather. And this is the third hearing we've held. The Board is scheduled to have a call meeting. It says 6:30. We're running a little behind, so it'll be a little bit after that. But they are, they do have a call meeting just after this hearing to consider a resolution opting out. Some considerations when it comes to opting out. There's concern about the current state of our digest. There's concern that the values are low by a substantial amount, sort of generally speaking. And if you're locked in to the rate of inflation, you'll never get caught up. So if our values are, and I'm just throwing numbers, these are just numbers I'm pulling out of the sky, but 30%, and you're limited to going up 2%, 2.5% per year, you never get caught up. And so just as a reminder, there's kind of two pieces to calculating the taxes you owe. One is the value of your property. The other is the millage rate. And so each year, you know, late summer, July, August, the Board of Commissioners goes through the process of setting the millage rate. And so if you have values that go higher, the Board can always lower that millage rate, and the tax amount that you owe stays the same. So, you know, so it's two pieces to that that can be adjusted. Now, if we, you know, if we were locked into low values, the only way to compensate for that as you go on down the road is higher millage rate. If you have values kind of where they should be, you can always adjust the millage rate down to compensate for that. One other thing that I wanted to mention here, assuming the Board goes forward and opts out, they could always come back at a later time when the digest was in a different condition, when values were more in line with the market. And you can always introduce local legislation. So you can go to your, the Board would go to our state representatives and our state senators and say, look, we want to have a new exemption in Jones County for X amount of dollars, or we want to do, you could do exactly what this bill calls for. And they would put a bill through the General Assembly and enact something just like this. Or it could take any number of different forms. So they could structure that in lots of different ways. And so that's an option that's always out there. All right. The remaining provisions in the bill. There was this concept of a FOST. I think I mentioned that some were interested in, some in the General Assembly were interested in a sales tax, additional sales tax options, and that's kind of what this is. I think it was an attempt on their part to kind of shift away from a property tax model to a sales tax model. And there are some provisions there. If a city opts out, that option's off the table. That process would still go through where the city and the county negotiate an agreement. The agreement goes before the voters. The voters would have to vote to implement the additional penny. So that's not anything that the Board of Commissioners here has talked about. But it was something that was in the bill, and so I thought I'd mention that. The last things here, these were procedural changes to the property tax process. You'll see some changes to the notice that you receive. There's a standard notice that I think the state gives to all counties, and it kind of tells you your, traditionally, it's told you your estimated tax amount. Now, I think what you'll see there is an estimated rollback rate. So that form is going to look a little bit different than what you're used to seeing. The bill also says that the Board of Tax Assessors can appeal a sales ratio study directly rather than come to the Board of Commissioners and say, hey, we need you to appeal this on our behalf. The bill requires that the chief appraiser ensure that every parcel is appraised at least every three years. And then the last two kind of relate to the appeal process. And I don't know if any of you have ever been through that process, but it talks about the settlement conference. And you have to go through that in good faith to get the 15% reduction that's available there. And then the three-year lock for appeals was changed so that you only receive that if you get a reduction in value as a result of the appeal process. So those are some technical changes. Opting in, opting out or staying in doesn't impact any of that. That'll be in place no matter what happens with the opt-out. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that's the end of my presentation. I don't think any questions from the Board? And then if you want to open up?
I get a more opportunity to speak. And anybody that wants to speak, just we'd ask for you to come forward, give your name and address for the record, and you can ask any question, anybody. Mr. Kitchen, you did a good job last time. If you want to lead off.
You just don't have a voice. So you want me to do it for you? Well, thank y'all for coming, everybody. This shows the interest in it. I'm going to try to give a little bit of a timeline on this bill and when it was introduced and why it was introduced. And at the onset, it was a good plan because it was introduced in February of 2023. So we know in 2020, when COVID hit, 21, end of '21, '22, housing market went insane. People were selling their houses for three times what they were actually worth. People were paying it, and there were no houses to buy, nowhere to move. You couldn't even find a place to rent. That was a market that we had not seen since 2008, when it crashed. So everybody knew that was an anomaly in the market. Tax assessors throughout the state were trying to keep up with that because when you have a house that sits here that's 200,000 and 200,000, and these are houses that are just alike, and this one sells for 400,000, well, all of a sudden, this value seems to be higher than these two here. So the fact is, this bill came out. It took '23 and '24 to go through the long process in the state to get this bill out to the public to vote on. It was passed in April of 2024, put on the docket in November of 2024 for us to vote on. Between April and November, we had little to no educating on this. The public didn't know much about it at all, especially didn't understand why it was or what it was. We didn't either. So when people went to the polls, understandably, this sounds like a good deal to me. Freeze my taxes where they are now, sounds like a good deal to me. 2% or 3% a year is all it can go up. That sounds great, and it is great if the playing field is level. The problem we saw was the market went crazy. Then it kind of dipped a little bit, and it started leveling out. Houses are still higher than what they were in 2019. We know that. But the assessment values have equalized a little bit so that we don't think a house or say that a house is worth 400,000 even though it sold for that. And that's where we find ourselves now because personally, I think it was a great plan in 2022 when they put it in to save our houses, you know, save us from just a straight incline of an increase in market. When it leveled out and the counties started trying to get their assessments in line, the need for that save our homes tax bill kind of went away. Didn't go away, but it kind of, it didn't have as much impact as it had when the things were going crazy. So that being said, the second thing that I'll say is I've never seen something that is uniform across the state of Georgia that is a one-size-fits-all. We're not like Atlanta. We're not like Macon-Bid. We're not like Twigs County. We have values and homes that our 2,500-square-foot, three-bedroom, two-bath house, built with the same material that you build one in downtown Atlanta, is starkly different in the value of that house. But if you lock both of them in at 2% and they increase like this, you don't have fair assessments of a house here as you do a house in Atlanta. They're always going to be stuck unbalanced like that. The other big thing that we know for a fact, and the state has told us this for three years, our tax values, assessment values in Jones County are so out of whack. We have 60% or so that are undervalued. I don't think mine's undervalued. I'm sure y'all think you pay way too much taxes now. We do, too. But you have to honestly ask yourself, if I sold my house right now, if I sold it for what the tax value said it was, would I be happy? And most of us, being honest, would say, no, I wouldn't sell it for what they got it valued at. I think it's worth more than that, and it probably is. But the state says that most of our values are low. So what that says is that 2%, your value of your house, will never get up to where it needs to be. Most of us are also going, fifth generation in Jones County, I'm never planning on selling my house. I'm going to die where I'm at, I hope. And most people don't want to sell them. But if you go to sell your house, you're locked in at a low value that went up 2% every year for 10 years, 15, 20 years. You're locked in, and when you go to sell your house, it's valued lower than what you can try to sell it for. The second thing is the ones that are locked in at the high value, that if yours is one of them that's overvalued, you're still getting that 2% every year. So you're overvalued, plus 2% every single year. That's why for us, we talked about the inconsistency and the non-uniformity of our tax values in Jones County is what's going to hurt us the most if we locked into a 2% to 3% a year increase. The other thing that really bothers me is this doesn't have anything to do with a new sale. So you can live in your house at 2% increase, low or high, for 20 years. And if you sold it and had somebody buy it for twice what the value was, your new value just went to twice what it was the day before you sold it. They didn't take into account that in the bill. And I think the chairman has said this before. The original, one of the original sponsors of this bill in '23 said it was a great, it was a great bill. It kind of was at the time. By the time it got voted on in November, they recommended counties and school districts and cities to opt out because the impact was different and the bill was different than what it was originally intended. There was a survey that went out of school systems in counties in September, October, somewhere around that timeframe. And at that time, we were a little over 70% of the counties were saying they were going to opt out because of the same reasons we're here. So if all your values were pretty close, if you're at the 40% where the state says you're supposed to be of value to assessments, then you're pretty good. Yeah, it wouldn't be a bad idea to lock in. But very few counties are where they need to be with their tax assessments. Because of the market, because of staffing in their counties, for whatever reasons, they're not where they need to be, that they can lock in at one cost for 50 years, a minimum of 50 years. And one thing that kind of proved it for me is when we asked them, give us two or three years to get our values right, and heck, yeah, we'd lock into this. That's a good idea. Nope, you got from January 1st to March 1st. You don't opt out before March 1st. You're stuck for a minimum of 50 years. They say it goes on forever, but, you know, 50 years is what they consider the lifetime of the bill. Yeah. And, yeah, it doesn't matter to any of us in 50 years. I mean, I hope we're all here for 50 years, but, you know. Yeah. But, right. And that's either, you know, so I think for us, and I'll say this, and I'm not bragging, but I'll say this about this board because I'm proud of it, and I live here. I actually have fifth generations. I can argue the fact that I do what I think is right for this county, and I'll argue with somebody all day long because the proof is in the pudding that every year since we've been, I mean, chairman came on the same time, Wendy and John came on the same time. Every year since we've been on this board, we have rolled the millage rate back to be revenue neutral, meaning whatever your taxes were last year, if you didn't add on to your house, modify your house, or any of that, we roll the taxes back so that your tax value that you paid to the county was exactly the same as the year before. People are going to say, that's not true. I paid more last year than I did the year before. Well, we don't control, and what y'all won't remember, probably because I didn't, the governor gave a $500 tax exemption across the state two years ago for a one-time deal. So $500 straight off what you owed to the county off your taxes that year for your property taxes. That was not in effect last year. So you automatically went back that 500. So if you take your tax assessment values and what you paid for taxes, '21, '22, '23, '24, and look at them, you'll start seeing that. I can tell you from our end, we have an open book transparency policy here. We have a roughly $30 million budget to run this entire county. That budget has fluctuated between $27 million and $31 million for the eight years I've been on this board. Because we roll it back, we know we're getting $30 million. We got to make that happen. We got to make the services happen for the $30 million we're getting in taxes because we do know that 70% of our money that comes into this county is off the rooftops and the backs of the taxpayers. We don't have a huge industry here. We don't have a whole lot of, I mean, we're thankful for what we got on Gray Highway and downtown Gray. But y'all think about it. Most of what comes into this county comes from your taxes, from your cars, your houses, and what you buy at Ingalls and the gas stations every day. That's what we live off of for a county to do it. So that's why, my opinion, and I think the Board has agreed unanimously, that this could be a good year if all the little outliers were right. But they're not. And so this is a, this is a bad deal for us because it takes it out of our hands to be able to roll back. Because if they reduce the amount that we're getting in, and we got to have $30 million, we're going to have to not be able to roll that millage rate back because we still got to have the same amount of money. And it's that old saying, if you take from here, you got to give it back here. So there's no way that we can reduce the $30 million it takes to run this government. So I think we've been entrusted and been trustworthy. I know the eight years that I've been here to not stick more taxes on the taxpayer. And that's all that this bill allows us to do by opting out is puts it back in local control of what our county needs and our taxpayers need. And I'm just going to be honest. I've said this before. My wife hates it when I say it, but I believe it to my core. If I don't do that, I don't need to be here. Somebody else needs to be in this spot. Y'all need to vote somebody else in here because that's my intent, that's my promise, and that's, if I don't do that, I don't need to be here. Because if I'm not looking out for y'all, I'm in the wrong place because I live here and have all my life and will all my life. Jones County is my home. That's it. That's all I got, Chairman. That's my speech.
It's hard to follow that. He covered everything I was going to say and probably a little more. So I don't, I don't have anything.
I'd like to say, but it ain't going to happen.
I'm going to say this. I've just brought in a sheet that's got some bulletins on it, too, that Sam didn't talk about. It's clear as mud, right? That's how clear this all is about what we're opting out of. We're going to let y'all. One of the things, I hope I can clear up some of it, too. All right. So one of the biggest reasons why we're so concerned is because of failed audits with our tax assessments. Our houses are not fairly and equally valued across Jones County. And one of the, and this is one of the things that is in this bill. Code Section 48-5-6, 264, relating to designation and duties of the chief appraiser by adding a subsection to read as follows. Now, listen. The chief appraiser shall ensure that every parcel in his or her respective county is appraised at least every three years. We've already had our chief appraiser tell us that he's not appraised every piece of property in Jones County in seven years. So we're going to opt in to something that we know our tax values are not correct? And we got a chief appraiser that now is going to be in charge of every three years, all 16,000 parcels of Jones County property is going to be equally and fairly taxed? Do you understand what equally and fair is? The three of us own a house. It's all the same square footage. It's all on the same amount of acres. They were all built one after another, month by month. My house is valued at $350,000. Jason's is valued at 125. Chris's is valued at 250,000. We're all neighbors. That's how some people in this county's properties are valued. It is not fairly and equally valued. So how can we put in place something that is going to cap us out? And it's going to, guess who's then going to take the blunt of where this is capped out at? Your businesses. They're going to have to go up on their prices of services that they render to you. Farmers, because their farmland is not homestead exemption. Okay? Then you'll also have rental property. Rental property doesn't get homestead exemption. So to be able to rent a piece of property in Jones County, it's going to cost you $3,000 to $4,000. So we have to think about everyone in Jones County, not just those that are fairly valued and could be capped out, but for everybody. And until we get to that, we can't do this. Okay?
Very well said. I got.
So.
Okay. I had a young lady. You don't want to talk? All right, ma'am, if you want to come forward.
If y'all will come forward, we got people at home that are listening. Oh, okay. That's what I was hoping with some of that long speech. I had some questions to get answered.
Did you want to speak? If you would, just come forward, introduce yourself.
My question is, I just want to know, how soon do you think this job in Jones County is going to be done so per house can be counted correctly?
Real quick, just for, we got to keep.
My name is Donna Pitts.
Yes, ma'am.
466 Stone Gaver Court, Green, Georgia.
You're my neighbor.
So the question is, how quick are we going to fix the problem?
Yeah, how quick is the problem?
So the last meeting we had Tuesday and then the meeting, the tax assessor. So Tuesday night, we approved the funding for a countywide revaluation. And I don't mean one or two people at a time. That means bring a company in to do them all at one time so that we have a level playing field now. That's probably going to take the better part of a year or more to get it done. And then we get it to the state. They equalize everything. We get it back. So we're looking at a couple of years before we see our this get more level.
So my next question would be, again, how long do you think? I would get a letter from you letting me know what my price is going to be.
Every year. You're going to get one in May.
You're going to give me a letter of the new, or whatever it is we're going to be doing to evaluate everybody's house?
You'll see it in your, when you get your taxes, your tax paper every year that you get on, you know, when even the United States Postal Service wasn't running right, we still got our taxes the next day after they were mailed in.
So all assessments go into effect January 1st of every year. So they don't do one in. So, so all assessments go into effect January first of every year, so they don't do one in February, one in May.
Okay.
So even though we're doing them at that time, they log them all in, and then as of January first, that's when your new assessment value for that year goes into effect. And they, you, you usually get the, our bills about, in May sometime, that kinda tell you what they're gonna be.
Right, it's approved by the, it's approved by the tax assessor board, the first meeting in May, and then they're mailed May fifteenth, and then you have a forty-five day appeal period. And that's an assessment notice with an estimated, in the past, it's been an assess, an estimated tax amount. But that's kinda misleading, because every year, as Sam said earlier, we roll the millage rate back.
Right.
So what do you do when one doesn't agree with the paperwork that you send as the appeal? How long does that take?
Yes, ma'am, you come into the tax assessor's office, and you fill out, you tell them, I wish to appeal this value. Or whatever it may be, maybe uniformity in the past. But you go into that tax office and you appeal, and then you have to have forty-five days to work it out, and if you can't work it out with them, it goes to board equalization.
And when you say work it out, let's, tell me what work it out mean.
They may talk with you about the difference, maybe they missed a porch, maybe they added an extra porch or something. Might be a mistake, it could go on to the board of equalization, that's where it's a three panel, three-person panel up here that, you know, is appointed, that would handle that appeal.
My biggest concern is, um, seniors have, people have retired, and everything has gone up, but people's income isn't going up.
Right.
So I know that's a big concern countywide here. And I know there's nothing that you here can do about it, because everything gotta go up, ain't nothing going down.
God, would you talk, talk to me about the school board exemption?
Yes, okay, so there is exemptions out there for anybody over the age of sixty-five. There's a school board exemption.
Sixty-three.
Six, sixty-three?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three.
Okay.
You qualify?
If, if you don't have kids in the school system.
No, if, anybody that's the age of, that age, when you get that age, you can apply for a school's tax exemption, okay?
It's like fifteen thousand.
It's fifteen thousand is the max. Um, but it's, it's also, it's, you have to do a, um, your ten forty tax form has to be turned in with it, no?
No, that's not, that's a school board exemption, everybody.
It's just on age.
It's based on age, okay? That's just it, thank Miss Debbie. Yeah, and then the other thing, and, and I'll, going off the back of what Sam and then we're saying, you know, if we bring in this company to reevaluate everybody's property, we as commissioners up here, we know how much it costs to run this county. We know that house, the values, the tax revenue is going to go up when everybody's assessments are equally valued. Like, right now, if I went to build a brand-new home, it's gonna cost me anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and forty dollars a square foot to build a new house, okay? I built a house twenty-three years ago, and it cost me about forty-eight dollars a square foot to build it then.
Yeah.
So, I, I couldn't build what I've got.
Right.
Okay? But, the value of my house has got to be valued at what today's value is. So that value would be a hundred and forty dollars a square foot, okay? So values are gonna go up. That's where we are important, to make that millage rate go down, so that the revenue that we're still getting in off your rooftops is what it takes for us to run the county. So we know that, and we don't want anybody to be surprised by it, because we know that that is going to happen.
Yeah, so.
And that's what we really trying to get an understanding of, what's really going to happen, because this situation right here is a shock to most people, I know it is to me.
And honestly, I would rather, personally, my, of my house, and I would think if most people, I would rather my value of my house be higher than what it, what it, what they think it is now, and me pay the same tax, than me pay the same tax because my house is lower valued.
Right.
Because if you ever do sell it, or even if people wanna borrow money against it, you know, that's, that's the value of that house.
Right.
What we have to do, we know if, when I just said sixty percent of the houses were valued low, then if those get right, then those values are gonna come up, and everybody's gonna see that bill go up. That's where we have to say, okay, we're rolling the millage rate back, so you pay the same amount. If the, if the millage rate is sixteen, sixteen meals, which is a percentage, a, a, a cost, a percentage of what you pay for a hundred thousand dollars on your house. If your value goes up a hundred thousand dollars, and we roll the millage rate back three meals, then if you paid a thousand dollars last year, and it increased, it doubled, and your bill is supposed to be eighteen hundred dollars, well, if we roll it back to what the millage rate was to equal out your money, you still pay a do, a thousand dollars, but your house is valued at eight, at the value of an eighteen hundred dollar tax.
Yeah.
One other thing you gotta remember, Jones County in the state of Georgia's got one of the highest millage rates.
Yeah, it is.
We do, we don't have industry, we need industry, that would help.
We do.
But.
We need something besides the, uh, people in Jones County and the.
That's right, absolutely.
We do, why don't we have anything?
But we're, we're, we're trying.
Well, lower mill, lower millage rate would invite industry and others.
Exactly, it, what I'm saying about us being able to lower the millage rate would, in, these companies that are looking at us right now, this industrial park, we've got a thousand square, uh, acres. They look at the millage rate, you know, they'll look at somebody else with a, a lower millage rate.
And that's where they'll go.
Jones County gets our millage rate where we need to be, rather than being one of the top highest millage rate in the state. We get, the state mandates us at this point, that's why we, if we've been keeping up with all the tax assessor stuff, the state, we failed the state audit, they mandate us to be, that one thirty, I think's our median, median now, we're at sixty. How many people are gonna sell your house for sixty dollars a square foot, let me know, because I buy houses. I mean, I hate to be that way, but I'm, I'm serious, if you wanna sell your, you know, Commissioner Kishan made a comment. Would y'all take what, what your house is on the market? No, uh-uh. But if we can get, get our digest corrected, that's what that board before us was, our new, uh, we got three new board of tax assessors on there. We've gotta get, we've gotta get our current digest fixed. So that this board can do their job too, and everybody in this room is treated equally. That's the biggest thing, we don't have equal, like she said. The example she did on these three, our three houses, there's neighborhoods that you can see that's got that, and, and it's not fair. It needs to be equal, and then when we get that equal, then this board can take that millage rate and.
I tell you what, I'm interested to see just how this gonna turn out, because in Stone Gable, I'm really interested.
You're right, you're, you're right behind, right, you know where I live at, you welcome to come see me anytime.
I will.
I've got, I'm, the invitation's open. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Oh, public speaking ain't my thing, unless there's a couple beer, beers involved.
My name's Ryan, I live on forty-one sixty-seven Alpharetta Road. Uh, this, this surprised me, uh, me and my neighbors, I spoke to a couple of people in here, I, not everyone. Three gentlemen in here were noted, get the newspaper. I got a text from a, a picture of a newspaper, so I don't, I'm the third meeting that we, we had, so that is, that this is the last meeting that we had that's gonna slam the hammer on this deal. Voter approval, well, it was approved in November by voters, who were the voters? Were, were we the voters?
Did you vote?
Yeah, I voted, but.
I'm gonna be honest with you, I voted for it too, but until I, but you couldn't see what, what was gonna take.
It was, it was exemplified as a saving expense exemption. It made it look like you were gonna be saving all kinda money on your tax exemptions for your homestead. And everybody always takes the opportunity to vote yes if it's gonna save them money.
Okay, um, that, that answered my question, I, I just kinda wanna make sure who was in control of that voting. All right, the existing exemptions, you say this had, it, no effect?
No.
What if you're in a jurisdiction that opts in?
Do you, do you already have homestead exemption?
Yes.
You still got.
Then it'll have, you'll still have that same.
Even if my jurisdiction votes.
No, 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 no.
We're Jones County, your jurisdiction is Jones County.
You live in Jones County, correct?
Okay, yes, sir.
Yeah, he, he, we wouldn't mean like District one or District two, it's Jones County, either the county, the only ones that can opt out is the city, the county, and the school board, and that's for everybody in that, in that jurisdiction, so everybody in the county would be opted out of county taxes. If the school board opts out, everybody in the county would be opted out of the school board.
Uh, we have one chief appraiser, appraiser? That was responsible for the entire county, one?
No, he has a staff.
He has a staff.
He's a staff.
Okay. I, I, only, only thing I have issue with is I don't think some of us was notified in time, like I said, this is the third meeting. This is the first one I heard about through a text. When I went to build my house, I had to change something of the, the covenants there, or I was trying to. Y'all sent a letter out to, like, in a three-mile radius of my property to everybody, and everybody showed up to that meeting. Yeah, and there, there was more people in there for me than this is, and this is affecting a lot more people.
Sure.
And, and I, I kinda feel like maybe we wasn't properly notified, maybe. And then maybe we, if, if we could go, like, get a letter in the mail to the people in the county. Uh, 'cause I didn't receive a letter.
It was, it was in the, it was, legal organs has to be used.
Yeah, the state set the requirements that we have to have, it has to be a press release, it has to be ran in the, in the local organ of your county, so it has to be ran in the newspaper of your county. We put it on websites, we did, you know, that kinda stuff, but.
And when was the, the first meeting?
Uh, January, I mean, we've only, we couldn't do anything till January first. So we've only got ninety days to do this whole process, and that's part of the problem that, that this bill causes. Um, you can't do anything till January first, and you have to have it all done by March first. And you have to have three meetings, you have to notify the public ten day, ten, uh, ten days in advance. You have to have a, 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 a press release, three public hearings, and then do, have a resolution that you're gonna opt out, and get that to the Department of Revenue prior to March the first. Any of those deadlines or any of those exact things don't happen, you don't have an option to opt out. I think that was in, intentional in the House bill, and this is just my personal belief, but I think that was intentional that the House bill, the resolution didn't come out to give people time enough to know about it. It was very muddy when you voted, and every, most of the people voted for it. And now we're having people going, I didn't even know that was on the be, on the ballot. I didn't know I voted for it.
I don't think people understood.
No, and, and the, and the man, and the person that started House Bill five eighty-one is the person that is going to all of us and telling us, y'all need to opt out of this. This is not the bill that I started on, this has nothing to do with what I started it to have.
Staring back door and a lot of stuff in behind him.
So a lot of other things kept getting slid into it. This was not his bill.
You're going for opting out, is that what you're saying, to keep it and say what?
No, opting out to keep things just like we got in Jones County.
So we can control Jones County.
Alright, so like.
So y'all are in, in, I'm not. Y'all, y'all, y'all are voting the same way is what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
But look at it like this too. I talked to somebody today that's from South Georgia. Okay? There is only in the region around him of twenty-eight counties in South Georgia, where most of our farmland is, okay? Remember, those farmers don't have homestead exemption on that farmland, only on that house, the parcel of land that their house sits on, is what you have homestead on.
No, my understanding, like, you had to have a minimum of twelve acres to get homestead exemption? And then they deduct two, and that two was for your house, and you got the exemption on the remaining ten.
So you think about these guys that are farming down there that's got thousands of acres?
Would you rather have a thousand acres on homestead exemption, or the little acre you got your house on, on the homestead?
Okay, but their taxes are gonna go up on that thousand acres to absorb what that homestead, those farms.
Do you plan on selling?
And you guess what, if you sell, the person that buys your piece of property is paying the taxes that you don't pay.
So you're, you're one fifty, yours is three fifty?
Uh-huh.
Okay, you want it to be an even playing, what if yours comes down to two fifty? His comes up to two fifty?
Exactly.
Do you think that's fair?
Yes.
If they're the same house.
If they're the same house and the same value.
But what if you end up in that area this?
No, we're not, we're all in the same area.
But what if you, you're not?
No, we're all in the same area.
So he's, we, we, he's not asking that, he's asking, what if you didn't live in one of those three houses?
Yeah, what if you had a trailer park next to you, like you do on the river road, and you got a, a three hundred thousand dollar house right here?
So you should be valued on what your value of your property is.
So you're gonna be valued on the fairness of what the trailer park is being valued.
Your property, your house, your house, your square footage of your house, if it's brick, if it's wood battened, if it's tin roof, if it's a barn dominium, everybody's piece of parcel should be fair and justly valued, and that's not what's happened.
I think what you're asking is if your house is valued, just say two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and you got a three-bedroom, two-bath, wood-framed house, two-story, three and a half acres of land, everybody in Jones County, whether they live beside a trailer or live beside a twenty-bedroom mansion, should be valued the same as yours, if it was built the same way, built at the same time, built on the same piece of prop, kind of property and all that. But if I own a double wide, and Jason owns a double wide on three acres of land, and mine's a seventy-nine model, his is an eighty-one model, then our va, our double wides should be valued at the same, as long as everything about the double wide is the same, is what I'm saying. But no, just because there are three in a row in a neighborhood, don't mean they should be the same. Because if he's got a fifteen hundred square foot house, he's got a twenty-five hundred square foot, and he's got a four thousand square foot, then they should be three different.
Yeah, yeah, that, I, 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 I agree, that they should, should be valued at what they should be. I, I, I'm just thinking that maybe somebody that's saying, doesn't have but a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, and then, then you, you assess. Then you assess it, but, but you assess it for two twenty-five.
Yeah.
Just because of the property next to you.
I'm gonna give you an example of somebody that shared with us today.
So one of the things the state puts, the simplest way they put it is, is a, a fair assessment of your house is what two people would, would, um, commonly agree on a sales transaction, a, a arms-lit transaction. What I think is fair and what you think is fair, to sell it and buy it, is pretty close to what it should be valued at. You know, well, all things considered, I don't know you, I'm not kin to you, I didn't.
How many people are planning on selling?
Yeah, and that's, well, that's the problem, a lot, when you don't wanna sell, you want your taxes the lowest possible, and pay as little as possible, I want that.
Yeah, everybody wants, nobody wants to pay more money, that's what.
That's true.
I think was the concern a lot of people, is this gonna cost us more money, a long money, I mean, we're guaranteed two percent every two years. If I live, if I do live fifty more years, it's two percent every, that's twenty-five percent.
Yep, you're right, that sounds good. But if your v, house is valued low right now, and you're paying lower than what, what it should be valued at, and you're locked in at two percent, for you, that's great. For the county, it's not, and we have to be looking for the whole county. But if we have to have thirty million dollars to pave roads, to have sheriff, to have ambulance, to have all the things that we have in Jones County right now, whether you like them or don't, it costs thirty million dollars to have them. If, if we don't get it from your taxes, we're gonna go up on something else. You're gonna, there're gonna have to be fees imposed, there will be, like, one of the things that we did to entice people to come to Jones County was did away, did impact fees down to zero. So if you go to build a house, and your impact fees to plan and zone, zoning was fifteen hundred dollars, right now you do that, it's zero, because we don't wanna punish somebody that wants to build a house in Jones County. But that could not happen if everybody had low taxes and, and should be paying higher taxes. That's, that's the, the harsh reality of it. This board has made the commitment, since I've been on here, and we have rolled it back every year, to where your taxes, nobody has increased taxes to get more money on, on taxpayers in Jones County. I can honestly say that, and, and show you the tax digest for eight years to back it up.
Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight? Just introduce yourself and where you live.
Arrow, Ohio, eight-six-eight Stallings Road. I'm in favor of opting out, first of all, okay? Thing I wanna know is, do we have a county manager that looks after, uh, like, you the man?
Yes, sir.
I'm just, I'm just look around, I'll just look around me, and I see what Baldwin County does with their water system. I don't know if there's anybody. I don't know if there's anybody over there that don't have water. And, and, and that would be nice for us. And also, I know pave roads comes up every meeting, but just to get some more paved somehow, I know it costs money. But it's just services, I think, that we could, I think, I don't know how you get these funds, these, uh, these tax grants, but. I know, I don't know nothing about it, but I know somebody's getting them, cause I see what they've done over in Baldwin County. And how many roads they paved, and how many, about their water system and all that.
I was gonna tell you, neck, T-splosh was on the ballot. Unfortunately, it was defeated. But that's one initiative that we, well, this past election is what I'm speaking of.
And it was just for Jones County?
And it was to pave roads.
And I voted against it, I'm gonna tell you, cause I didn't want that tax on my back, but I'm already paying when there's funds from the state and the federal government to help us with water systems.
So that's, uh, that's not exactly true. There is not free money anywhere. There's money from the state, just like borrowing it from a bank. We, we got pretty good credit as a county. We can go to, we can go to a bank, borrow money real cheap. We can go to the state and borrow it just as cheap or cheaper. We've done that. Right now, we have, what is our, ten million, twelve million?
The water project?
The water projects that we got.
Uh, twenty million, yeah.
We've already got, I think we're getting six hundred re, um, new customers on one side, six hundred on another side, and then going towards Haddock. So we're basically going down Graham Road, going down forty-nine and fifty-seven, and going towards Haddock.
You're going toward Haddock?
Get, getting as many as we can. Everybody knows the outliers are when you're ten, fifteen miles from the nearest paved road. It's hard to get water to that person. But yes, and we had to do that off of money we borrowed, new customers, and then money out of the general fund. It took three different types of payments to be able to fund a water project to get water. Uh, if we had water and we had sewer, we'd probably have more people along Gray Highway with businesses.
Was that splosh y'all put on the, on the ballot, was that money to pay for the, to borrow the money from a grant? Was that what that was for?
It was for T-splosh. It was mainly for paving.
Transportation, it's T-splosh is only transportation, so it could only be, and we had a list of the roads that would be paved with it.
Well, see, now that.
But we, and, and we know we did a very bad job of educating, but we could not go out and solicit it.
Law doesn't allow us to say, hey, we think you ought to vote for this splosh, because we're telling you, you need to vote for, give us more money. That, it's an educational component to it, that we can put out posters, flyers, and we got a horrible, we sat in these board readings for six months before and said, we need to do this, we need, here's some ideas to get the word out. We, we posted it, we put it in newspaper, we posted on our websites. We did all the social media things, Facebook, Instagram, all that kinda stuff. But we could've done more, you know. Unfortunately, and this is gonna sound horrible, but unfortunately, on so many occasions, we've had town hall meetings, or meetings open to the public. Normally, this room's got three or four people in it, and a board bed. That's, uh, that's horrible for me. I want more people to come here and keep us accountable. But when we have a, a town hall meeting, or we have something like that, we, we set it up, we plan it. At the civic center, we have them here, three people show up, seven people show up.
Ms. Debbie, how many people showed up for the school boards of opting out of House Bill five eighty-one? One, in three meetings? How many showed up at the City of Grays?
And you're right, to your point, part of that is, you didn't know.
The mailbox, who gets, um, probably half the people in here get a newspaper. Some, half the people here probably don't use the internet. Everybody's got a mailbox.
And.
I mean, I know.
We have to mail, when we mail out something like that, we usually put it in with your, with your taxes or your water bill. Now, everybody's going to electronic water bill. It's, it's astronomical, the cost to, to mail thirty thousand letters to.
I'm sure it is, but Ingalls manages, Harvey's managed to send out a flyer twice a week on their sales with bulk rate.
Look at Ing, Ingalls profit at the end of the year and look at Jones County.
I, I, I get that, I don't hear that one all day long. I'd love to have their checkbook, they have mine.
And I'll send a little flyer anytime we wanna get there.
I just think bulk rate would probably could be affordable to this point. Cause I found out about this meeting this morning. I didn't, I didn't know about it.
Yeah, we definitely don't, we don't deny that, that we could do a better job. But, but this particular situation, the state dictates what you have to announce to the public. They don't say you can't send out a flyer, but we had, we're on February sixth, we're, we're literally thirty, thirty-five days into this that we could do something.
Some of us found out two days ago, it just felt like the carpet was being ripped out from under us.
One other thing.
I hear that loud.
Even though we voted for it, I could.
I hear that loud.
One, one other thing, y'all doing a great job. I, I, I fuss a little bit, but it's not, it's just constructive criticism about. And John's done a great job keeping our road out there. His bad as that dirt road is, he, he keeps it navigable, so thanks for that.
Yes, sir.
Hey, I wish y'all would show up. Uh, we have these meetings twice a month.
The first and the third Tuesday.
We, Lily, we would love to fill this room, because I cannot take my number of times, we've only had two or three people here, and I'm going, this is a public meeting. And, you know, we need to.
I'm guilty enough.
I believe people would come, or, that the, this is the matters, what matters.
First and third Thursday. First and third Thursday.
First, first and third Tuesdays.
You could, if you wanna call this young lady tomorrow.
She can put you on the thing.
Yep, put you on an email list.
Put you on an email list, and you'll get everything we got, we're doing.
Uh, my tags are due by my birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The information is there.
Yep. Anyone else?
Yeah, but like I said, we had to do certain writing size, everything. That's how strict they were with on how we could notify the constituents of our county. They, that, it had to be a certain size print in the newspaper.
Okay.
Uh, Donnie Clayton, two fifty-five Raffel Range Road. Um, I think I, I think I captured all this the best I could. Even with, uh, House Bill being opted out of, there will still be homestead exemption, but the county will control the value of that? Like, what, what the exemption is, correct?
The existing exemptions will stay just like they are now.
Okay, I thought that was only under the House Bill, so.
Yeah, every, everything that's in place now stays just like that.
Conservation, all that.
Right.
That's a separate, that is a separate thing, perfect. Um, and then I guess just from my understanding, it's fair to say that some of us will see our taxes go up, some of us will see our taxes go down as our property values are balanced out and equalized based of what they're actually worth. Um, for the county, it's probably a net gain, right? Because sixty percent are undervalued, so it's probably a net gain, but then you're reduced.
The millage rate.
The millage rate.
To make it the net gain.
And, and the millage rate, uh, impacts everybody equally, regardless of the value of your, your homeownership or your land. So when, when you're having to raise millage rate, it's, it's impacting people who are not getting that tax break just as much as it's impacting the people who are.
Yes, but it's not always equal, because if your va, if your value of yours, your millage rate is the same, so it's the multiplier of your value. And if my, my land is a lot higher than yours, then I'm gonna pay more taxes. So it doesn't equalize the amount you pay. It equalizes the, the multiplier that you pay by.
Got you, that makes sense. And then just last question, um, the, the meeting, uh, to opt out, this is to educate the public on the decision, right? I mean, there is no recourse to stop that action. It's, it's happening. This is just a formality to, to make sure we're educated, right?
The, the, the responsibility lies on the five of us for the vote, yeah.
Fair, okay. That's it, I appreciate it. I just, thank you for your time. I have to go pick my kid up, so.
Anyone else? Young lady?
I just want, I just wanna ask this question. He was saying, y'all mail out the tax bill, no, Jones County don't mail out, the state, the state mail it out. The tax and, and the taxes come from the state. It's just a bunch of Jones County thing.
Anyone else? It's following.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Y'all just sit over there.
Y'all wanna take us to a quick break before we go into there?
Yes, please.
Y'all like to stay, we got.